Do it. All right, let's do it. A call to order, the Town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for May 25th, 2022. And welcome aboard. We're still in hybrid territory here as we're still conducting, obviously, online hearings and in-person meetings here at the C Street Meeting Room. And I'll make some introductions and get on with the show. So I'm William Hanley, I chaired the planning board. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller, we've got Dave Ashmore online. And we've got Gloria, our new alternate member. And I think one of the first things with Gloria is we probably should vote her online on as a voting member tonight. Cause I'm not seeing Meredith or Christie online yet. And I don't know how you guys feel if you want to give it a second and see if they jump on really quick or just get right to it. And let's get Glory on board to then here we Meredith's getting online. Meredith was online. Hi, Meredith. So we're just waiting here briefly for see if Christie Anastasia joins us. So I'll add to the introductory spiel too, we are within the Zoom environment. If you can, please sign, just type your name in chat. So we have a record of who was attending online and obviously, you know, as best as we can, let's all try to stay on mute. What else? What's the other Zoom protocol? Let's not have any side discussions in chat and and raise your hands so we can just, you know, see if you've got a question. And we've got, so we've got, okay, we've got Meredith Randolph joining us too. We've got Christie Anastasia, so and Glor Kunjay and Gloria. I think tonight you're going to be an alternate member now that we've got everybody all here. So let's do this. Yeah, absolutely. You can participate, comment, go for it. All right, so let's see, on the agenda tonight, we've got approval of minutes, however, there are no minutes currently to approve. So we can move right on to item number three tonight. Item number three tonight, we have a conditional use approval application. It's conditional use approval application oh seven, 2022. Name is Town of Mount Desert, agent is Tony Smith, the Public Works Director. Location is off Beach Hill Crossroad, tax map 10, and it's near lots oh two, oh nine dash one oh three and oh nine dash one oh four. The zone is Shoreland Residential Two, and the purpose is section 3.4 excavation or filling greater than 150 cubic yards. Culvert replacements within the Beach Hill Crossroad slope state and slope stabilization along the Beach Hill Crossroad. We had a site inspection at five o'clock and was this one advertised and a butters.
Yeah, it was advertised on May 12th, 2022, and a buttered notice is down on May 9th.
All right, and at the site inspection, it was Tony, Tracy and myself. And how about Tracy reports on the site desert?
All right, Bill and I met with Tony Smith, the Public Works Director at the Salem Beach Hill Road. And there we observed an existing culvert and a large heap with water running through it. And then runs through the culvert and downstream toward the ocean. And the actually existing culvert has had numerous repairs. And I think that Tony said he is working with the Smart Stream Program. People at the DEP and they have come up with a solution to replace the existing structure with sort of a more of a large box that will be under the road surface, but the whole thing will stand six, seven feet tall and be rather broad and allow the water to flow more naturally through under the water. The current culvert acts sort of like a dam and the water has to sort of squeeze into the culvert pipe. And this larger structure will let everything sort of flow, will reduce the water level in the heat section. And a part of the, part of the construction will involve putting in guardrails there for the vehicle safety. But, but mostly it seems, sounds as if it would put the ground and earth and all the animals around it closer to the way they would have been before that road was paved. That's what I've observed. Tony, do you want to add anything to that or give a presentation on that?
Sure, I, I don't mind. There are actually two culverts and they are both in really bad shape. And the day of taking out one pipe and putting in a new pipe per DEP is gone. As Tracy said, we're in the Stream Smart Program. And the big structure she was describing is called a box culvert. It will be overall 17 feet wide and eight feet high with an opening of 15 feet wide by six feet high. And I attended a couple of training sessions on these. And once it's done and you look inside that box culvert, what you're going to see, the length of it up against the wall on each side are big stones. And then in the flow channel, you're going to see various sides of rocks, including some a foot to two feet in diameter. And the, the, I'm grinning because the smaller rocks are picked by the engineers. Or in our training session, we went down or upstream identified what we considered a typical cross section of that stream. And we stepped just into the stream against the embankment. That's foot one. You reach down without looking, pick up a couple of pebbles or stones and put them in a bucket. Then you take one step, a foot forward, a step a foot forward until you're all the way across. At each point, you reach down, pick up a stone and you look at the stones in the bucket. And you try to match the existing size of stones and shapes inside that box culvert to what's in there naturally in the stream bed naturally now. The reason you do that is so that the aquatic life, when it comes upstream, will have places to rest. Right now, those two culverts at higher water, plus one of them is a foot off the stream bed on the downstream side. If the aquatic life can't get up over that one foot drop, they can't continue on upstream. But naturally, there are places aquatic life can pull over to the side, get behind a big rock, take a rest or get down burrowed into the stones and take a rest. And then continue on up through and periodically resting, dropping eggs, whatever. The work time period is the first of July, excuse me, middle of July through October 1st. And that's DEP mandated to avoid fish runs that are coming upstream. The catch on this one is that I found out today that we cannot get the concrete box culvert due to the supply chain problems everybody's experienced experiencing until this time next year. The good news is the price on that has gone down. I'd mentioned that to Bill and, and I'm hoping we can work out an arrangement. Nothing in the design will change between now and then. And I understand the conditional use permits have a lifespan of a year. And I'm hoping that we can work something out here tonight such that a permit, if we, if everything's okay, I can wait to take the permit out later on to be within that 12 month window for working that summer. Contractors agreed to hold this prices. He's not going to increase the prices. He feels it's RF Jordan. He feels that the reduction in cost of the box culvert should offset any increases in costs of the other materials, which are essentially gravel, stone and pavement. It's a pretty straightforward project. They'll be driving sheet piling on the upstream side of the existing culverts. And then pumping the, as a big dam, then pumping around, they'll put a pump upstream, pump the water around across the road into this downstream side of the, of the road. So they can open that section where the box culvert is going and be, not have to work in the water. Erosion control, you'll notice in my application, it's the first time I ever experienced this with an engineering firm is VHB refers for erosion control to a particular section in the DOT's highways and bridges manual. Otherwise, as when I've come before you folks before, I've had copies of typical sections for erosion control. And typical, the specifications for erosion control and sediment management from the construction documents. You don't have those, but there is reference to the DOT's manual. However, before Jordan can start work, they have to prepare an erosion control, sediment control plan, provide it to the engineers and there'll be no digging until that is approved by the engineers. And my hope is we can be awarded a permit contingent on Kim receiving a, an adequate, suitable erosion control plan. That's about it unless anyone has any questions.
Tony, let's talk about the timeframe on this. So you know, is there, if you're not going to be in possession of the box culvert until next year at this time, is anything going to happen there this season?
The preliminary clearing, we have, part of the project is guardrail on each side of that opening. People asked me for it in the past, and I've said at some point we will put guardrail there. And this is the point, there have to be some trees removed. Plus we're putting in riprap embankment stabilization, as embankment stabilization along each side of the road.
With what about? Go ahead.
Aside from some clearing on both sides of the road, Versant is going to be replacing three utility poles. They're going to take advantage of this project to replace three of their poles on the upstream side of the project. As a temporary measure during construction, they're going to move those poles further out so that the contractor is not working directly beneath the power lines.
So you have utility, utility changes, you've got tree removal and you've got bank stabilization.
The only thing you might see, we might see this year is some tree removal. And some stump grinding so that the plows don't hit the stumps.
Is that going to be anymore?
Can, can any of the riprap begin at all, Tony?
It is, it won't be cost effective to mobilize just to do that because Versant hasn't moved the poles yet. The trees haven't been removed.
Is Tony, is there any way we could do more than just tree removal this season?
And they, they won't, that the, that limited season is based on working in the water. We can work outside of the water.
Just trying to think, you know, we, so that we've got a one year from the date of the planning board approval of any conditional use application, we've got one year. And you've got to substantially start the project.
Okay.
More you come out of the gate with, the more we're able to consider that a substantial start.
Okay. Can, can we decide on what a substantial start might be? And I will see and get a conditional use permit subject to the submission and approval of a erosion control plan and then the substantial start X, Y, Z or A, B, C of the work. I just.
I think that's what our code enforcement officer is considering at this very moment.
Okay. Can I ask, is it not more sensible to simply put the, put the application off for six months? Why not just wait, not, not so that you're pushing the timeline or anything? But if you give it six months, you'd have tons of time before you started the project. You know, but you'd also have time to get it done.
Yep, that, that would work for me. That's fine. And then
Be easiest rather than trying to figure out some way to make it a significant start?
I like that idea, Meredith.
Either way, I am content with.
What do you think?
It's such a gorgeous call.
Yeah.
What was that? I having a hard time hearing you.
I said, Bill was asking me about it and I said, it's this call, the planning board's call.
Cause I, I thought that the planning board was like a permit by rule, good for two, two years. But I asked Bill after Tracy after you left, and he said, just a one year lifespan. And Kim, I just found this out, like, I tried calling you to give you heads up so you wouldn't be blindsided, which you were. I apologize for that.
Okay, we'll, we'll, who can, you know, table this and then put it on an agenda for, you know, a time that you feel would work.
Yeah.
Tony, just, you know, just let me know and I'll, if there's a specific plant meeting you want to get on and I can go, you know, we can talk about it tomorrow and then I can put you on the agenda to do it while you and I are talking so that I know it's coming out.
Yep, we, I, I could meet sometime in the fall and then after, after this coming up, upcoming construction season, let that get behind us and then agree on a date to meet with you folks. Would, would the application have to be resubmitted or can you keep it on file? And in the meantime, Kim, I can get you an erosion control plan too.
Can you continue it to a date certain?
Yeah, but what's it do? Cause nothing's changing, right, Tony?
Correct. You're, you're correct.
But you're aware of.
Yep, nothing, nothing's changing.
Yep, do you have a calendar in front of you?
Yes.
So give me a date that you want to be put, and we can continue this to a date certain in the fall. And then we don't have to re-advertise, we don't have to put it in the paper. They don't have to do another site visit. You just tell me it's the, the second or fourth Wednesday of the month in the fall that you want to be put on and we'll continue it to that.
In September, the, the second Wednesday you said is the 14th.
Is that what you want to be on September 14th?
Yep, sure, September 14th. That's the, that's the second Wednesday in September.
All right, we'll continue then to September 14th of 2022.
Okay.
Okay.
If the board agrees, which that's up to them.
That makes sense, Tony.
Yes, yes. I apologize for this 11th hour snafu, but we've got some of the work done.
Yeah, well hopefully it'll be through the Suez Canal by then.
Yeah, yes. But and thank you, Meredith, for your, for your suggestion. It worked.
Great. So then we should probably go.
You gotta go, somebody's gonna move and I can't, then roll on. I, I'll make a motion that we continue this particular application of the Town of Mount Cert regarding Beach Hill Crossroads to a date certain of September 14th, 2022.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. There you go, Tony. We'll see on nine 14.
Thank, thank you. And if there are like five agenda items, please don't punish me and make me number five. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your help. May I be excused, Mr. Chairman?
You may be excused, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
All right. Bear with me while I read a bit from the agenda for the next application. And item four tonight, we have a subdivision approval application. And we're looking at section 5.13 Plan Revisions After Approval. And under 5.13.1, what that states is that no changes, erasures, modifications, revisions shall be made in the final plot plan after approval has been given by the board and is, and its written endorsement has been recorded on the plan unless the plan is first resubmitted and the board approves any modifications. As we carry on, the 5.13.2, it states that applicants for revisions shall submit at least eight copies of any proposed revision. And if the revision involves the creation of additional lots or units or extends the boundaries of the subdivision, a public hearing shall be required. Otherwise, the board shall determine if a public hearing is required. And tonight we have Land and Garden Preserve. Agent is Greg Johnston, it's tax map oh oh one, lots oh oh six. It's lot 10 on the subdivision plan. The location, thank you, is, yeah, it's funny, like I don't have it on mine. The location is 92 Cooksey Drive, Seal Harbor, and the zone is rural woodland three. Purpose is modifications who were previously approved and recorded subdivision. It's amendment number three of the Birch Brook subdivision. First amendment was file 30, number 75, recorded April 12th, 2001. And second amendment was file 32, number 140, recorded May 25th, 2004. And yeah, and there's two of these back to back. Can we do the simultaneously or?
I would, because they're same subdivision, just different, they have lot mergers and breaks it out.
Yeah, there's, it's the same division.
Just different map and lot numbers.
Same revision. Same revision, yes. So so I guess I should probably ask the board if you guys are okay with reviewing this simultaneously as the two, as it's essentially two lots in consideration at the same time, you're essentially taking from one and adding to another.
Well, you've got A is affecting lot 10 and then B is affecting lots two and lot four and nine.
Could we separate them?
No, what I'd like to say is it's a revision that has some changes. So it's the same revision of plan, plan gets recorded with revision, putting multiple things that are going on with that. But that is the revision to the plan.
Yeah.
Before we get there, I do want to make sure the board determines whether a public hearing is necessary.
They'll do that, let's get to that. They're just trying to determine how they want to alter J and B.
So between so we've got multiple lots here, but they're all within the same third amendment.
Yes, yeah, correct. And they're all within the Birch Brook subdivision.
And they're all within the same subdivision. So how do you guys feel about this one? Dave?
I'm with me to review them together.
Meredith?
Yes, together.
What do you think, Christie?
Together, make Anastasia, together makes sense.
I would be okay with doing them together.
Gloria, what do you think? Think we can review these together?
I'm just listening in for tonight, so and seems good, whatever is being discussed.
So it sounds like the consensus of the boards, we're going to review these together under the, as it's all under the same amendment to the original plan. And so I'm going to read B then as well. So B, the owner's theory properties LLC agent is Greg Johnston, it's tax map oh oh one and this, and B is lots oh oh six dash oh oh four. It's got two on the subdivision plan and it's lots six, oh oh six dash oh oh six, lot four on the subdivision plan. And oh oh six dash oh one one, lot nine on the subdivision plan. And again, it's rural woodland three, it's the same ad.
No, it's just off rock, rock garden land.
It's off rock.
Doesn't have an address because it's not developed.
Right, I, again, I don't have a location on mine, but it's Rock Garden Way, Seal Harbor. Purpose and the modifications are previously approved, reported subdivision. Again, that's the reference to amendment number three. And with that, was this one advertised and the butters notified?
No, because you guys need to determine whether this requires a public hearing or not. That's your first course. So you need to have Greg explain what's being done. And then you have to look at 513 two and what he's explaining to you. Is it creating a new lot or units or does it extend the boundaries of the subdivision of what he's proposing?
Right. All right, you're on, Greg.
Sure. Well, I think what you've said so far is all in line with the application. And simple term, the lot two in the subdivision, I'm trying to point it out here. The entrance to Rock Garden Drive, lot two of us. Four, but lot two was originally approved with a half on the east side and west side of the drive, all you guys. For the first, the first modification is the Eastly half of lot two, which is on the Eastly side of Rock Garden Drive, is being combined with lot four.
Okay.
The westerly half of lot two, which is on the west side of Rock Garden Drive, is being combined with lot 10. And then lot nine is right there with the westly half of lot two. Lot 10, which is further up north on Rock Garden Drive. It'd be lot nine.
So that's
Being, being absorbed into lot 10 as well. So summarizing, easily have a lot two is being absorbed into lot four. Wesley side lot two is being absorbed into lot 10. And lot nine is being absorbed into lot 10. So the result of which would be two less lots in the subdivision. Now just going to say it fast.
So it sounds like the revision is not creating additional lots or units. You're actually reducing it by two.
Check, yeah.
And you're not extending the boundaries of the subdivision.
That's right.
So what do you guys think? Does this one require a public hearing? So what do you guys think? Does this one require a public hearing? Based on the criteria of five point one three point two?
Doesn't sound like it to me.
What do you think, Dave? Tracy says no.
Yeah, I don't think it requires a public hearing.
Meredith?
I agree, doesn't need it.
Kristi?
Agree with everyone, it doesn't fit the criteria of meeting a public meeting, hearing.
Whoever's screen sharing, that's incredibly helpful, thank you. All right, do we need a vote on that? So let's get a motion on the table that it, that a public hearing is not required. Based upon the criteria, review criteria of section five point three point two.
Can I just say so moved, you just spoke it perfectly.
Sure thing.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Kristi?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
David Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. So. No public hearing. Right. Now, now we're in the report.
You gotta sign the plan.
Yeah.
I would like to entertain beyond that threshold to explain remaining in effect, just so it's on the record, we're clear. Lot two has tree topping rights, I mean, lot two easterly half has tree topping rights that benefit other lots in the subdivision. Those tree topping rights remain and run with the land, they're not being removed. Lot two also has a no build zone on it, that also has remained, those.
East or west?
That's on the east. The no build zone on the east half of lot two will remain in effect when it's absorbed into lot four. The other change worth noting is that the westerly half of lot two had a height clearing restriction benefiting lot nine.
I see that.
And lot nine is being dissolved, so that on the westerly portion of lot two, that tree topping limit is moot point, lot nine no longer exists.
Then you mentioned too, that all conditions easements restrictions on lands contained within the subdivision shall remain unchanged by this modification.
That's correct. Now, if the board has any questions regarding those aspects, I'd like to entertain them and then point on a few other things before we.
I mean.
These are, these are restrictive covenants, aren't they, stuff put on by the developer?
I think this is very, these are actually on plan and plat, and I think that they were, however they were developed under there, we're just knowing they're not changing. I do, that's, I do want to talk about covenants after that part, homeowners documents and that sort, so.
But the boy doesn't have any jurisdiction over those anyways.
Correct, and I want to address that.
We'll go for it.
So there's a few things on the plat, I'm gonna, sorry for those that are home, I'm gonna pass this out. We from what you have in your hand, that we had some administrative, there's a couple typos that have changed leading up to me, and I want to walk through those, so you understand what they are.
Whoever's screen sharing, can they highlight those as we walk through?
Yeah, I can walk through them at the screen. I have a larger printed, the owl can pick up the larger print. What I did is I bubbled on this, the changes which we want to walk through to make sure you have them, have a chance to view them. So, start, I don't know if I'll be.
Rodney must be screen sharing. No.
Actually, I'm, I'm.
So they don't, they don't have this illustrious exhibit, it's probably going to be okay, because I just highlighted to bring them to you. So you guys will have to follow along, because it doesn't exist anywhere but in my hands.
Got it.
And the board's hand. So I'm just gonna note in the middle here, there was a line on what you have that showed these lots joined, like, that was just a remix line that we took off, so look at your printing, in the middle, there was a line that showed them are joined. And we just took that line off, because they weren't joined anymore. Yep.
Yeah.
Sort of a symbol that shows they're the same, so. So you know, that was there, we also that's the point where it's in this line is line removed. The tree topping easement, it was just clarified that the tree topping easement would remain on the easterly half of what was lot two. We simply stated it, but we wanted to be explicit and say that it remained. But I'd say unchanged, we're just clarifying that was still remaining. Secondly, secondly, but thirdly. Make sure everybody's. What we described is the moot easement benefiting lot nine, lot nine, because lot nine was not going to exist anymore, is removed. So on the one you had submitted six weeks ago, that note is a moot point, when you remove. We have a we just further describe the area of lot two, there's lot two lying west of Rock Garden Drive, just to be more specific. In the note. And then the note above, we have, we missed spelled word combined. So they're not Meredith's changes, but I think it's good to understand those are somewhat administrative, but you should be aware of them. I think the one that Kim was talking to, you've also added a note to the plan.
Is that necessary to put that on there? Because it's not on any of the other plans that they approve.
Well, it's necessary, I guess, as part of the revision we're proposing, and we just want.
Yeah, but the board doesn't have any jurisdiction of easements, covenants anyways, that developers put on.
I agree, I don't think this states anything differently, does it?
No, but what's the reason putting it on it?
I think it's just explicit in not speaking towards it, but actually addressing it. I think if.
Yeah, but I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah. Greg, can you? You should probably read that.
Yep, so the extra note we put on there is the planning board further acknowledges that amendments to the subdivision declaration of covenants are not part of the board's purview review. Further amendments to those private documents shall not require planning board review and approval.
I don't think that needs to be on there.
I don't think that needs to be on there.
Nor do the tree easements.
Margaret, you've got your hand up.
Yes. Um, this language was added at my request, and let me show you, I think. And try to screen share again, maybe what I should do is do it this way. Can you see the screen that I, that is up there?
Yes.
I'll bring it to this, okay, so in the first amendment of the Declaration of Covenants, there is a sentence that's created some difficulty in this particular subdivision, and it's right here, it says no, okay, so it's in a section called section E, amendment of the declaration. And it sets forth the conditions of such amendments, and then it says no amendment will become effective until it what has been, until it is approved by the town of Mount Desert's planning board and recorded with the Hancock County Registry of Deeds. Now, of course, we agree with having it recorded in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds, but having it approved by the town of Mount Desert's planning board has created difficulty for us. Not because we wouldn't want to bring it before the planning board, but because the planning board has no jurisdiction to decide on these, the covenants that are on this subdivision. So we have a contradictory sentence within this first amendment declaration of covenants, so what we're hoping is that you will adopt this wording in the subdivision plan, and then we can go forward and adopt changes to this section E in the future, so this jurisdictional contradiction will no longer exist.
Dave, what do you think about this?
I don't, I don't, I don't see why it would hurt to have it in there.
It's been a longstanding issue for the, for this subdivision. It's just created catch twenty-two, two, or an impediment to making, to even considering changes.
Ask a question, Margaret?
Yes.
Is it such that the the covenants can't be revised until that amendment is made in the covenants, and then the covenants can be revised?
That's.
It can be removed from the covenants, but until the or approve that change, you can't go over and move it, so you have the chicken and egg instance, and that's repeatedly happening over and over.
That's exactly, that's exactly right, and once we remove this, then any future changes to the covenants will be will done within the rules of the subdivision, and I should say that the planning board, I think there is the first, there's the original Declaration of Covenants, the first amendment of the Declaration of Covenants, and the second amendment of the Declaration of Covenants. And at least the first and the second amendments all were certified, or both were certified by the planning board. I mean, granted, this was quite a few years ago, so the standards might have been different, but this particular one, I don't have the certification on this one, but it is, it was adopted later. I might be able to get to it and show it to you, but it will take a second. I can show you on the second amendment, I think, there was a a certification at the end, right here, by the planning board for the second amendment. So now we're, we're, there have been no further amendments. And we'd like to be able to make amendments without fine, including a certification adopted by the planning board. So subdivision plan, or subdivision plan is adopted with this language, we'll be able to go forward without the planning board approval, which makes sense and is the more modern way to do it.
So again, Dave, you, you feel that 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 certification clause is okay to remain?
Yeah, I think, I think it's okay to remain.
Yeah. Tracy?
I, I agree with David, I think it serves as a way to, to solve their issue, and it doesn't seem to hurt us at all, so.
Meredith, what do you think?
Makes sense now. It just, it was, it was out of context before, we didn't, didn't realize the context that was being proposed in, and so it's fine, yep.
Kristi?
Can someone just zoom on the language in the red cloud?
Okay.
Like, maybe pinch it open? Oh, better, you, yep. Okay, I understand, yep, it makes sense.
We need a vote on that.
Yep. We need a vote, you also might want to make, have the town attorney look at this too.
Yeah. Let's get a motion on the table then, about the certification clause.
What are, what are we voting, we voted that we don't need to have a public hearing on this, are we just making a motion to say that we're good with all the location changes on the plane?
That's a week. Yeah, good, good question, Meredith, so we, we did vote that we don't need a public hearing for this, but you know, Kim's under the opinion that we do need to have a motion that this clause referencing us and the Declaration of Covenants is okay to remain.
Barking dog, somebody else should make a motion.
Just thinking, thought I think that's a fine idea, I think it obviously restates the given, and if you were to approve on the condition of that, we have to prepare the my lawn, bring it back for signature.
They don't do my lawn anymore.
Or paper. So we have to bring it back for signature between then and now, that could occur, and we would be notified through code department, whether or not acceptable, if it's not acceptable, I think you would have to come back and have approval without it on there, I just think that you have to approve the plan the way it is, it's either approved by the condition, and if not, we would be back.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to have a board finding on the board's position on this clause, and then it sounds like we're gonna have, probably have a condition that the town attorney is, is in agreement with the board's position as well.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. So why, why don't we first get a motion on the table that is.
The reconfiguration of the lots is.
Well, no, I, I think we should get a first, a motion on the table relative to the, again, what's the wording here, the, the subdivision declaration of covenants language suggested on the amended site plan is the board is in agreement with the language thereof.
And you to plan our attorneys.
Contingent, contingent upon the town attorney's review.
How about starting with a as the subdivision is the deed has contrary information on changes to covenants contrary to the board's policy?
Meredith, hold on. I have lost it, okay.
Meredith, maybe we, you know, reference that, you know, within the context of the two previous declaration of covenants having the.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, sorry.
Now I got two different thoughts going. Within the context of the two previous, well, the first one didn't have, obviously, didn't have the, there's a second amendment that these covenants, this language, the certification, if you will, was of covenants was recorded for this subdivision. What I'm worried about is as you're brainstorming, there's a motion in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Margaret, what's the date of that certification?
Um, I, do you mean, um, this.
Was recorded and signed by the planning board?
Okay, um, let me look. It goes this one, it was two thousand and two, oh, oh. It goes this one. It was two thousand and two. Oh, oh, you're talking about the first amendment.
No, I'm talking about the one you have up right now.
About right.
October twenty, two thousand and two.
Yeah.
So.
And I send that to you if you wish.
Yeah, I'd like to have that. So the planning board reviewed the subdivision. The first time. On April ninth of two thousand and one. And then they had a second amendment, which was an oh, four. So was this done outside of the review of the subdivision?
Um, yes, it was. It was the.
Is this something that came back as an amendment to have this done specifically to the planning board?
Um, no, this was. There were a number of different. Well, well, yes, it was part of it. But there were a number of different changes. You can see there was the change for a height and. Size restrictions in this particular amendment.
Yeah, but my question is, it wasn't done during the planning board meeting of eight or with the public hearing, I guess, the final meeting for the signature on April ninth of two thousand and one. When they did the revision.
Um, correct. I would say that that's right.
Well, this they must have come. They must have come to the planning board. Whenever you got October twenty eighth of two thousand and two, asking the board to certify that those covenants.
I think that's probably true, but I don't know. I have.
They didn't read again for the second revision until May twenty fourth of oh, four. So they must have had a special meeting just to do these covenants.
I think that's the way that the. That they contemplated doing it in this particular subdivision at the beginning of this millennium.
Will you send me that, please?
Yes.
So in general, the consensus of borders were okay with the language. Added into the current plot plan with the declaration of covenant. I'm just thinking out loud.
But I know it's gonna turn into. And I lost it again.
Pending the approval of the town attorney.
Review.
And and that's within the context of the previous planning board. Review and approval of. From April ninth, two thousand and one.
Well, there's two cells. That goes.
Yeah.
So they did do that on this. This is April ninth and recorded. Can you send me both of those, Margaret?
Yeah, for sure. And um. You can tell even back then it created. I'll see this particular provision created difficulties because this. Certification. Was signed in two thousand and one, and then it was not recorded until. In two thousand and twenty-two, when the second. Change in the declaration of covenants was adopted. So I mean, I think that this. Bringing it before the planning board has been a difficulty for this subdivision all along, and I will send all this to you, Kim.
Meredith, my apologies. I didn't mean to hijack your your motion.
I am so offended. You totally bogarted my life. Whatever gets us through it. It's fine.
It's a team effort.
Absolutely.
Dare I ask to.
Oh, you want me to try again?
Yeah.
Slowly, slowly, please.
I I still think we should would should start because it's an unusual situation to say due to. The language in the.
Okay, hold on. Okay, language in the.
What is that document? Amendment? To the covenant?
It's the first amendment of declaration of covenants.
There.
Hold on. Okay, so due to the language in the first amendment to the declaration of covenants.
Which is contrary to the policy of the board or policy contrary to the.
Is the board's jurisdiction?
Contrary to the forge jurisdiction. Yeah.
All right, let's see. I've got due to the language in the first amendment to the declaration of covenants, which is contrary to the board's jurisdiction.
We approve the added language.
Yeah.
To the subdivision. Is it the subdivision plat?
Yes.
Contingent.
Yeah.
Contingent.
Yes, contingent. Contingent on.
The town attorney's. Review.
Okay, so due to the language in the first amendment to the declaration of covenants, which is contrary to the board's jurisdiction. The planning board approves the added language to the subdivision plat contingent upon the town attorney's review.
Sound good?
Well, I, of course, think it sounds awesome, so somebody.
Do we put the language in there that that is being shown to us on screen? I'm gonna have to have the language.
Okay, I'll communicate you slowly. No, we don't need to. Okay, all right. Okay. So no, we're not gonna include a. No, okay, I do need a second.
Tracy Keller, outside him.
Oh. Christie, you were.
I was gonna second, but Tracy beat me.
All right. All right, well, then how about all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. We vote on. Just sign.
Once like it's resolved. Are we? Do we need to table it till the next meeting?
I think you approved it.
No, you approved. Right. It's just if once I get that. Figure it out, then Greg will either have that on the plat or he won't.
And then we'll get a.
And then you guys will have to come in and sign it. And you have to do it like ASAP because or within ninety days.
Yeah. It's gotta be recorded.
Everybody good with that? Dave's nod on his head. Yes, I saw a little nod from Meredith. Can't see Christine. Christie's good with that.
I'm good with it.
Tracy's good with that. I'm good with that. There you go. I'm done. Yeah. Margaret, if you could turn the screen share off. Thank you. All right, so we. Everybody clear on where we're heading with that? Most part. All right. Thank you. And moving on to item five, other. Do we have any other other tonight? The doodle hole thing weird on the quarry. Yeah. And.
Why did we get this?
Yeah.
I think it's just, why'd you get it?
Yeah.
I think Jen just gave it to you, so you have all current addresses, phone numbers and emails.
All right. Well, I guess the only other thing on the agenda tonight is item six, adjournment.
I vote to adjourn.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I.
Hey, do you have all the chat members?
I think I do. It's not many.
You got Rodney.
I have Rodney. I have Margaret.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure you had up there.
I I had everyone, and then they signed there.
Yeah, you want these? Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good night.